All right. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the Fort Mill Town Council regular meeting on Monday, March the 13th. Thank you all for joining us this evening. If you have an electronic device, be it an iPad or a phone, or anything that might cause us to look up when we shouldn't, please turn it off. So we'll give you our attention and we can have yours. With that, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance and I will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with service in mind. Help us to do our very best to serve our community in which we all love. Thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon us daily and we hope that you will continue. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Committee. Council members, you have seen the minutes for February 27th and January 19th. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
Hearing none, I move to approve.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. And is it okay that we did both of them at one time? Thank you. Public comment pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in for this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Presentations. We'll begin with presentation number one, recognition of Tim Kramer from the Planning Department. Penelope. Well, Penelope looking rather stylish and festive right now.
Getting ready for St. Patrick's Day.
Love it.
Good evening, everyone. This is Tim Kramer. He's my planner in the planning department and I wanted to bring him tonight to recognize him for passing his certification to become an arborist.
Oh, that's awesome.
So he is a very talented planner. He's been helping me a lot with the trail master plan and now this new certification, we're just so excited to have him as an arborist here at the town. So I just wanted to congratulate him for passing the test. He was so calm and collective the day before the exam and then he came in and he was like, yeah, I passed. I was like, oh, that's awesome. So just wanted to recognize him.
Well, thank you, Tim. Where did you take the course, the study?
So the exam is ISA, so it's International Society of Arborists and it's just a their cert. And it's just been over the years through work experience, I've gathered that knowledge and it was just, I think, a couple, you're allowed to do it a couple of different ways and that's one of the ways you can do it.
That's awesome. I just love that you did that. That's great.
An all-versed on planning commission makes my heart happy.
Yeah. Definitely ties into the trail plans we're trying to do and everything in this community.
Oh, that's wonderful. Just wonderful. Thank you.
I'll give him another round of applause. Alrighty. Yeah, we'll make good use of that. Our presentation number two is from Jacana Hester, Family Fun Day on March 25th, 2023. Thank you, Jacana.
So we will be having our family fun day. It's our first big park event of the year on Saturday, March 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Walter Elijah Park. On the amphitheater stage, we will have entertainment going on that entire time. And then we also have food trucks, amusements like mini golf and stuff like that going on, as well as DJ Brown Sound will have music and contests going on in our food court and we'll have yard games. And then we also have, in celebration of the town's 150th, we have some activities that we will be doing at the town tent involving that. And on our entertainment, on the amphitheater stage, we're going to have Amazing Veronica and her talented dogs. She was featured on America's Got Talent. And we have Giggled Box Circus, Cat in the Hat, Chubby's Fun Factory. Those are other shows that'll be on the amphitheater stage. And then Soap Bubble Circus is roaming bubbles. It's a guy who goes around, does all these neat bubble stuff on his bike. And then DJ Brown Sound will be set up in our food court doing a hula hoop and cake walk contest and having music over there. And then we also have Turbo, who is a nine-foot roving robot.
Whoa.
And it's just, I mean, the more fun with the yard games and the amusements that we'll have, cornhole and mini golf and stuff like that. And then our food truck lineup is Choncho's King of Fire, that wine truck, Charlie B.'s Seafood, Salute You, S&amp;K Funnel Cakes, A Sprinkle of Love, Chapel Snack Shack, Cray Food Truck, Jam Rock Jerk's Bar, and then Pelicans and Abbott's. And that is a layout of our event, how everything's going to be set up. DJ and the food trucks will be on the right-hand side of the park and then on the left will be where all of our amusements and yard games and of course, the amphitheater stage there. And for all of our town event information, you can find that on fortmillsc.gov. And also just follow the Town of Fort Mill on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter for all of the updates.
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook two or three times.
Will our playground renovations be complete? March 31st.
Yes, April 31st.
March 31st.
I had some call me today from the crew, so.
Well, then that's even better news. That was not.
They gotta get some work done.
We'll talk.
Yeah, they gotta move it up a little bit.
We'll talk.
Yeah, I saw some of, Jacana, what's the age that this kind of targeted? Obviously it's for younger children. Is there a certain age group? What kind of?
Not really. I mean, we're just promoting as a family event, but anybody's welcome to come. I mean, I love dogs. Everybody loves dogs and Veronica and her dog show is really, you know, good for anybody. But, you know, it's families of younger children probably mostly.
Great. Exciting.
I think with the food trucks and the cornhole, you know, that could appeal to an adult audience. I think we work to try to balance so that it's not just one.
One side, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Any further questions for Jacana? Hearing none. Jacana, thank you for the continued good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation number three, procurement department update. Phillip. Hi, Phillip.
Good evening. Let me go to the next Chris. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. In honor of National Procurement Month, I wanted to give you just an update on all the happenings in our procurement department and review a few accomplishments that we achieved throughout the year. An important item that I always try to remember and applying to our procurement mission statement, and it speaks in here, the mission statement of the Town of Fort Mill Procurement Department is to provide excellent customer service while promoting fair and open competition and the procurement of goods and services necessary to support all town operations while maintaining the highest standards of integrity and ethical conduct. And when this mission statement is followed, it creates an environment for a fair and a competitive bid process.
That's beautiful.
So I can speak off procurement for days, but I just wanted to give an example. This is the process of when we go through procurement, where it starts. You know, it starts with budgetary and then a definition of needs. Then we work around the circle all the way to negotiations. We get to the contract administration and then over to the retirement when procurement finishes and then it picks up. And at the end of the day, you could have a park at the end of that. You could have a new building. So we do that when we put out the RFPs. Those are the request for proposals and the request for quotations as well. And so I went through and counted up today and actually we've reached 103 that I personally have pushed out over the last few years. So I think that's something to see and to speak about.
That's awesome.
A few of our notable projects just from the last year, and we've had quite a few really exciting, vibrant projects, but just a few that I included just from this past year was the renovation of the complex YMCA showers and restrooms, the awarding of the long-range facility assessment. That's a big one for us. Also, the structural turnout gear for fire department. And other noticeable projects from the last year, awarding the Fort Mill Master Trail Plan, the bid and award for the construction of the recreation complex tennis courts and restrooms. That's another large one. Also, we've done lift stations for utilities department. We've helped out with strawberry festival items, also the playground equipment when it comes to the Walter Elijah Park. So as you can see, procurement really does affect all town departments in some way or the other. I always like to give this quote, this is one of my favorite quotes, especially when it comes to procurement. It says, "Money is of no value if it cannot spend itself. All depends on the skill of the spender." And so I always try to remember, the skill of the spender is important and that comes with experience over time and it also comes with training as well. This year, I was actually able to obtain the NIGPPA licensure. So what that is, is the Public Procurement Associate and I was also able to win a scholarship this year as well. So I thought that was pretty cool. So they actually, NIGP actually gave $1,250 in credits for me to use for classes. So those were really beneficial. From these trainings comes exposure to new methods of purchasing, which is always exciting to see what others are doing around the country especially. One of the exciting items that I, I try to keep a log of all of our purchases. Usually they're the larger ticket items, but I try to keep a detailed log of those and just savings. What do we save? What do we get? And over the last almost four years, we've saved over a million dollars. So that's exciting when we look back at that. And I always have this little paragraph that I say, it's a quote. I always say, "I believe when we cast our net out using different sourcing methods that we create more competition and with more competition, we receive better, lower offers in which saves funds for all of our departments." And that affects us as a town as a whole. One of those methods that we use is state contracts. I love those and I really, I look to that as a source. One of the other methods is when we're talking about cooperative purchasing programs, the blessing of these are they're free to join. You just have to join and use these contracts that have been put in place. And so we've been able over the years to save hundreds of thousands of dollars on different projects throughout the town that someone has done the work for us. They've done the contracts, so we actually can piggyback off of those and use that previous work to our advantage to save funds. And like I said earlier, as I stated before, it is National Procurement Month, which is the month of March. Just want to thank you all again for being so supportive, all the support that you've shown to procurement and to myself and to the department and happy Procurement Month.
Phillip, I cannot begin to tell you what an asset you are to this town and I'm so exceedingly proud of not just the presentation, which was very good, but the hard work and the investment of what you bring to the table is invaluable to us. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're an amazing person. Thank you.
Great steward.
Phillip, I did have a quick question. On the cost savings, how are you doing that? So when you're calculating that, is that the cost savings versus what was originally budgeted or what's the comparison?
So actually, I look at it a couple of different ways. When I take the budgeted number and look about how low are we coming in under? That's one method. Another is, is actually when we're getting quotes from different companies, I look at it from their quotes and I always go, okay, this is so tacky, but do you have that coupon? Where is the coupon? Do you belong to, and do you belong to SourceWell? Do you belong to one of the purchasing agents? As soon as they tell me that, then I know I've got my in and then I go for it. And usually you're saving 10, you can save up to 15% just by asking, do you accept SourceWell? Do you participate in Omni GSA? So it really does, just by asking and having that membership. And like I said, the membership's free. You just have to take advantage of it.
And then since you're kind of doing a dual role, I'd love to see us start looking at cost savings with labor as well. So when we have an opportunity to maybe spend a little bit of money, but we're saving labor in the long run, right now we know employment is hard to get enough employees to fill all the positions. I'd love for us to try to track that as well as track the training that you've done and be sure that we're recording that in the, you know, even the arborist with, yeah, make sure that we're recording that in our personnel records and, you know, bringing recognition in your records with that, that you're continuing to grow professionally without us requiring to, but then also what is beneficial for the town. So again, $1,250 in a scholarship's awesome that we're not having to pay for that, so.
That's right.
Thank you for bringing those two together too. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
The mayor always says about being stewards of the taxpayers' money and you are a prime ambassador of that.
A poster child.
You are a major child. But to add on what Ms. Cook was saying about the recognition, like you were saying with Tim, and that, I think that should be on our Facebook page and something like that to give that recognition and then for what you've done with that certification, so absolutely.
Well, I know we can't always pay the highest salary with what the private sector has out there, but you know, maybe there's a way we can grow it within, yeah, our footprint of making people feel more valuable in the work they're putting into it, so thank you.
Before you sit down, you know, I can tail on to all of these comments, but I think it's really important to note that you did these things on your own, that you had the initiative and the desire to have skill in your role and to make a contribution in your role. And that's what I hope for every employee. That's exactly, you are, as Lisa said, the poster child. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the support.
We appreciate you great.
My business, one of our taglines this year is make it your own, you know, treat it like it's your own business and you absolutely do that every day, so. And it shows. We feel it when we work with you or talk with you, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Alrighty. We do not have any old business items this evening, so we'll move into new business item number one, first reading. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Town of Fort Mill to enter into intergovernmental agreement relating to the South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters relating thereto. Chris Pettit.
Mayor, thank you. For many years, the Municipal Association of South Carolina has collected a variety of business license taxes on behalf of the town. Those programs that they collected, those were the insurance tax collection program, broker's tax collection program, and telecommunications tax program. They have collectively rebranded these as the local revenue services, which is much easier than saying all those. So as a part of that and as a part of the ongoing standardization across the state for business licensing, we are required to enter into this ordinance that would, just again, because of the change of name, authorize us to enter into a local intergovernmental agreement, entering into these newly named programs so that the Municipal Association can continue collecting these dollars on our behalf. And beyond that, there's really not too terribly many changes other than just some technicalities to meet some of the new state law requirements of the new State Business License Act.
What percentage of what's collected comes to us?
A majority of our business license money comes to us from these programs. They're the, being the big dogs, so to speak, of the insurance companies, telecommunications companies, and insurance and brokers, telecommunications, yeah. So it's a significant chunk of money that comes to us from the Municipal Association. They send us a check. It's very easy. We don't have to do any work on our part. The program works flawlessly. They just renamed it essentially.
Got it.
Can I ask one question? Barry, when working for a telecom company, do I need to recuse from this vote? Okay, I always want to make sure.
Thank you for being careful. Appreciate that. Any further questions on this name change? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Motion to accept new business item number one.
Approve. We got a motion to approve new business item number one and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Thank you, Chris. New business item number two, agreement to fund municipal court attorney for the 2023-24 fiscal year, Davey Brim.
Thank you, Mayor. York County employs two public defenders that are dedicated representing indigent defendants. Of those two, City Rock Hill carries enough caseload to warrant one full defender. And so they cover one cost for that defender. The remaining municipalities of Fort Mill, Tegucay, York, and Clover, we combine our efforts and pay and fund the second public defender for that service. Four years ago, Solicitor's Office and Municipal Managers developed a criteria for dividing these costs. Under the contract, each municipality pays a buy-in fee of $8,500 apiece. And then each municipality's percentage of the balance is determined by the percentage of the caseload as calculated using a three-year average. This percentage is then applied against the remaining balance of the money needed to fund the position. So in the pie chart that was listed, you can see that Fort Mill is in blue. We have a very small caseload. One of the driving factors in that is we do not have the number of retail and commercial businesses that some of the others do and then, and/or the indigent defendants. And so based on that, our percentage is very low. You can see over that three-year period, York accounts for 589, Clover 575, Tegucay has 182 cases, and Fort Mill has had 20 over that time period. So based on that, we're paying basically 2% of the overall, the additional cost above and beyond the base pay. With that, it is, it's a very good program. I have researched it in the past to determine, should we remain in this program or, you know, if we want to take a chance and go out on our own. What I have found is that it's difficult to find the quality and consistency in this type of service that we, that you would get with the 16th Solicitor's Court and also the lack of number of opportunities, not a lot, there's not a lot of interest there as well. So with that, I am asking if council would vote to determine whether we want to remain in this program for the 2023-24 budget. Last year, we went through this vote again and we were paying it in this current budget, but this would be for the next budget for the county.
Got it. Seems pretty straightforward. Who has questions?
Was it around the same allocation last year? It seems like it wasn't a whole lot.
No.
It was about close to the same because if you, last year, I think we had, that was our highest year, 13, so.
Right.
And the year before that was probably less than six. It's probably.
Seems like a pretty good deal.
Oh, it's a great deal.
So I'm making a motion to approve.
How does the York County piece of this, because you're talking about within town limits of Fort Mill, York, Clover, how does York County fit in this?
They are the ones that hire on and pay for the salaries for these defendants.
Okay, so the 8,500 is only a portion of the salary?
Yes, that's correct.
Basically?
Yes, so four municipalities are paying, the start, the buy-in rate is 8,500 for each municipality.
Okay.
And then anything, the cost above and beyond that to, for their salaries is what's kind of divided based on a three-year average.
Yeah, it's a progression. Gotcha. So technically, York County is part of that buy-in as well.
Well, New York County, this is not, this is only for Fort Mill municipal courts.
Okay.
So this is Fort Mill Municipal Court, Tegucay Municipal Court, York, Clover. Yeah, that's not the county. This is the Town of York, not the county. This is our municipal courts.
Okay. Further questions? I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion to approve new business item number two and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number three, a resolution accepting a street within the Carolina Orchard subdivision, Carolina Orchard's Boulevard into the Town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. This is Ward Three, Mr. Hudgens, and Penelope, you're our subject matter expert.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Basically, we're wrapping up the Carolina Orchard subdivision. So this case right now, we're talking about Carolina Orchard's Boulevard. It is basically, it meets and exceeds the requirements. We do have the maintenance agreements for the landscape median and other non-standard right-of-way sections have been completed and recorded and this is basically a resolution accepting the Carolina Orchard's Boulevard.
Any questions for Penelope? You're all familiar with the street acceptance program, that the street has to be brought up to Fort Mill standards or we will not accept it.
It's all construction done in there probably by now, right? I would imagine.
Yes. Inside that section.
And the builder, developer gives us a one-year warranty along with it.
Yes, that is correct. So if it passes tonight, the resolution, then we have a warranty period, which is a year, and then we have the utilities department go out there to double-check. But it does, for the residents out there, you know, once we pass the resolution, it is town-maintained roads and I will send the notifications to all the department heads, fire, police, that it is our road.
And I will say, thank you for attaching the non-standard pavement maintenance agreement, which refers to what's covered and what's not covered by them. So that's very beneficial.
Is that the main entrance? Forgive me, but I don't have my reading spectacles with me tonight, so, okay.
Yes.
All right. And has all the work we've required of them been done?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I know we got a situation in Massey, so.
Yeah, we, and it's been, you know, and Jessica Marsh is here from Polte. She's really worked with us really well. I mean, they've been wanting this road since last summer, but we've been going back and forth to just 100% make sure everything is good, so.
Looks great. Any further questions?
I'm making a motion to approve the acceptance of Carolina Orchard's Boulevard.
I have a motion to accept new business item number three.
A second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. All right, Penelope, stay put. New business item number four, a resolution accepting a street within, surprise, Carolina Orchard subdivision, Hammond Road, a portion into the Town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System, Ward Three, Mr. Hudgens, Penelope.
So this is a portion of Hammond Road. So Hammond Road, this portion is going to be in the town limits. The rest of Hammond Road will stay in the county. So just for council to know, the sidewalks along Hammond Road, that is part of the Carolina Orchard subdivision, will not be maintained by the Town of Fort Mill. These sidewalks are located on the HOA property and will remain private and be maintained by the developer and then as the developer transitions to the HOA. This part of Hammond Road is where the dog park is and that's the area. Basically, they meet everything and we are just taking a portion of the Hammond Road and this will also have a one-year warranty period.
Why are we taking part of Hammond Road since it was already established?
It's because of where the property is for, where the dog park is, is part of the town limits.
Okay.
And York County does not accept roadways inside the town limits, so they require us to.
Okay, so it has to transition. Okay, that's why I was trying to figure out. I thought it was.
It was theirs first.
Right.
It was.
Yeah. And that's why we're not going to maintain the sidewalk that is on the polsees and then also the HOA when they take over.
So Penelope, I see that in the write-up, but in the ordinance or the resolution, I don't see that denoted about the sidewalk. And I know it gets confusing. I want to make sure it's clear for future generations to refer that we all.
Sure, I can add that.
Yeah, I would think I would add that too there because right now it doesn't say.
The sidewalk is not located within the right-of-way, so it would be outside of the scope of our work anyways, so that's why it was not included.
So, but other sidewalk, the other sidewalks are?
The other sidewalks, to the extent that they are ours, are either within the right-of-way or within a sidewalk easement. This is totally outside on private property, so it's.
I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not because I saw that and it's, this little, since it's a little different because we're using.
little, since it's a little different, because we're using the same non-standard pavement maintenance agreement. So I just want to make sure. Y'all know better than we do how you track it. I just want to make sure it's clear going forward, so.
Sure.
Further questions? Hearing none, I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept new business item number four.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Penelope. There are no information discussion items. We do have a committee report. Councilman Hudgens will give us a report from a zoning committee meeting.
First off, thanks to Chris Bennett and Penelope for helping compile and allowing me to share the notes. I was much more detail-oriented there. So the, there are two main topics we discussed, first being campaign signage. The committee discussed the current ordinance relating to the campaign signs. There was a lot of confusion, I think, in the most recent election that needed to be clarified there, and this goes a long way to try to solve a lot of those questions. Staff presented the ordinances from several other communities. They did a lot of homework, a lot of other, four or five other communities, I think, around town of comparable sizes to Fort Mill, all of which were focused on keeping signage out of the right-of-ways as a way to keep safety a priority after preserving sightlines. Very critical there. Based on discussion, the committee would recommend moving forward with a text amendment to change the timeframe for sign removal following an election to 48 hours afterwards. By Friday, that means if the election is on Tuesday, by Friday morning, they should all be up. At that time, if they're not, the town would be able to, to deal with that. Otherwise, the recommendation is to keep the ordinance the same, which requires election signs to be placed only on private property with the private property owner's permission, no earlier than 60 days prior to the election. The committee discussed the enforcement protocols for this, which would include new language to be prepared for all candidates that receive, that they would receive, and that would clearly indicate the requirements that would be by the town of Fort Mill regarding political signs. And it also specifically notes that any signage placed in a public right-of-way will be removed and not returned at any time. So that's to be very, very clear and not to be misunderstood by any potential candidates. The other topic was mobile food vendors. It's been a real hot subject as of late. The community, or the committee discussed the current ordinance. The main priority of the discussion was safety and making sure that the trucks were following all necessary protocols with receiving annual inspections from the Fire Marshal, having a valid business license, and staying up to date on hospitality taxes. The committee discussed ways that staff could highlight each truck. For example, colored decals to indicate that trucks were approved versus if they were not approved, a simple, at quick glance way. Committee would recommend moving forward with the text amendments to remove the no overnight stay requirement from our current ordinance and to make trucks permitted as an accessory use to a commercial use.
Thank you, Ben. For those that are not familiar with how we manage our committees, committees are made up of a variety of council members and staff. They are noticed publicly. No decisions are made in any committee meeting. They are intended to bring to council well-fought-out, researched items on which we may or may not take a vote. It just depends on the issue. But it is intended to have beneficial discussion and beneficial research and questions that we may come up with, so that by the time it gets to council, it's something that we feel better as a council voting on. In particular, to Ben's notes, the signage, that is a safety issue as well as an aesthetics issue. Signs can block right-of-way from a traffic perspective where you couldn't see to turn. Some of the signs are larger, and I won't lie, it's also a staffing issue because, and a relationship issue, because all of us have had to put up signs. We understand it. But when the town goes out and removes them because we've had a complaint or somebody's argued, we have to remove those with a staff person that isn't assigned just to that. We have to take them off their regular job and have them go do this. And then we've been holding them and dividing them up and giving them back. You know, this isn't how I want to spend taxpayer money. I don't want them to do that. If my signs are in the wrong place, take them up and burn them. That's fine with me. And it's a cost issue for the person that buys the signs. So we are trying to make it as clear and simple as possible and return our staff to the place that they're doing the jobs they were hired to do, not just go out and pick up signs that are a safety hazard or aesthetically a problem. So I appreciate that. Food truck issue, we're just trying to get it right. We've compared with everyone else's food truck licenses and everyone else's food truck management. We're not trying to do away with them. It is related to safety to ensure that all food trucks are met with the right DEHAC approval and the town's approval and the fire department's approval, so that when they go into communities or to events, they're safe for the residents to have. So I just want to bring clarity to that because there seems to be some ample discussion.
And I'd like to piggyback, Mayor, just a little bit on that. It's not that we're attacking food trucks, but everybody up and down Main Street or everybody that owns a business in town has to pay for a business license. It's not fair during COVID, it was the Wild West, a food truck would pull in, would, and have, and serve people, and then they'd be out. And it's not fair to all the businesses in town who have bought, paid for business licenses and are, it's not fair to them, and this is, just, I want to say that because I feel like all of us have kind of been beat up a little bit over that topic. I have, Ben, particularly in White Grove, and I've explained it, that it's not fair to the businesses that are here that have paid the licenses for people to be able to come into town and not, and not have to do the same.
But there's room for both. There's obviously a desire by the public and our, our community to have the services of food trucks at certain events. We use them ourselves at town events. So it is not to preclude or to drive business away from brick and mortar, but it is to ensure that both places do it in a legal and a safe manner to serve our community. That is our responsibility. So we're not here to make money for any business, be they brick or mortar or on wheels. That's not our job. Our job is just to make sure they do it in an orderly and safe fashion for our community. Okay?
I'd follow up on, on the food, actually on both of them. On the food truck, Mr. Hudgens mentioned about the stickers, it'd be an easy way for code enforcement to walk into the farmer's market or wherever they're at and take a quick look to say, yes, it's been inspected this year, it's doing what it should. So I think that was, would make it much simpler and also to make sure they're aware they need to file their taxes, ATAX and all the other stuff. The other thing is on the, the signs, I think that's a realistic solution. I know that when you file, you get the information in the packet, so I would, you know, ask everybody who does file and run to please read those inserts so there's not some confusion because their signs just go up everywhere on, on property where it's not in a right-of-way, and then they become trash if they're not picked up. So I think that was a good, appreciate the committee's work on that, and I think those were both good additions and clarifications on the need and the use of how to do that.
As we've looked on that sign piece of it, and I may have misunderstood, it sounded like you said that we're only allowing people to have political signs, specifically political signs, on private property for 60 days.
Right.
So we're telling people?
That is a recommendation. That committee cannot make a decision. That would be a recommendation that we would have to vote on.
Not on public property.
Okay. But on my, on private property, we're saying what they'll be able to do.
Six, starting 60 days on.
Okay. And then it also sounded like it was focused, the direction it was going was on local elections, but what about non-local? So presidents?
Political signage.
Okay. So any kind of office? So, and my concern is some of the wording, it sounded like, again, targeted, and I hate to use that word, more of the local people that, how are we letting, you know, to your point, when you, you go sign to run for president, you're not signing the York County or the Fort Mill rules. So just making sure we're communicating.
For the people that go out and put these signs up, just as much as they're actively working for that person, they need to know within the bounds.
Yeah. So I think it's just making sure communication. Agreed. Because we have no jurisdictional right to remove signs off of private property or outside of our jurisdictional boundary. We are given the, the direction from the DOT to maintain the safety of the right-of-way. So we, we have direct jurisdictional ability to manage a certain amount within the town. It's just much easier based on committee discussions, and, and council can vote ever how they wish. But it, it's very difficult for us to know anymore what's where. I mean, there are no distinct lines to say, this is where the right-of-way stops and starts, this is private property. It's difficult when we have to pull people off a job and send them to go maintain the town. So if we know it's on private property and it's, they've gotten permission, we can't do anything about that anyway, right? So it's just to help us better manage and not spend taxpayer money picking up signs, no matter what office they're running for.
Exactly. And I was just going to say, I, I know, you know, we had signs on private property last year that got taken up, even though they were, we had approval and so forth, because of not knowing, you know, town staff having to go research to find out, and they didn't, they just pulled them off. I just want to be sure that we understand both sides of this. You know, we talk a lot about not having policies in place that we can enforce, and making sure the enforcement is worth the squeeze in some ways with this. Again, as Gwen said, pulling somebody off of a job to pull up a sign, just, I'm curious to see a little bit more detail than what was presented, so I'm excited about it, not saying I'm against it, but.
To your point, you know, it's a lot easier to enforce something that is, yes or no, private property or not. That makes it so much easier.
That was the idea, was to try to, that was an attempt to make it more black and white. And it falls back on the people there. If they're responsible enough, they feel like they can take, run for office and win office and represent whatever office they're going to do. It's not rocket science to learn the laws and learn what the right-of-ways are from a basic function, site triangles and things, so it's, it's part of the process.
But I do think, as all of us have run campaigns, and not everybody put their own signs out, that when you run a campaign and you have people come and say, give me five of your signs, I want to support you, you don't know, even if you tell them, don't put them in the right-of-way, you don't know where they're going to end up, because they don't know. You know, so I think we need to make it easier so there's not the vitriol between parties. It's not that we don't want people to have the opportunity to be recognized for what they're volunteering to do, but we also don't want to take town staff and taxpayer money to clean it up.
Mr. Hudgens, so what does this impact off-premise signs, or is this just campaign signs?
This would be.
Just campaign signs.
Just campaign signs. So. So there's already something in place for off-premise signs, right?
Yeah, the committee didn't discuss the off-premise.
Yeah.
Right.
So I guess what I'm thinking about from a process standpoint, Chris, will we have something written up that we can present to council to vote on?
The, basically, should council accept the recommendation of the committee, we would move forward with drafting a text amendment, go to Planning Commission, then bring it to council.
So we can vote on a recommendation now?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I need a motion on this particular presentation for the changing of language in the sign ordinance for political signs.
I'll make a motion to approve, to accept the motion to move forward.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Appreciate the hard work, guys.
Mayor.
About the food truck?
Yeah, since it was.
Do we need to do that too? Okay, I thought we.
Well, you just said one, I would have done them together, but yeah.
They're two different ordinances, aren't they? I don't think they're written the same. And I didn't realize we changed anything in the food truck ordinance that was significant, is it? That we changed the wording?
We were changing items that would require testing.
The no overnight stay portion of that.
Shouldn't, before we vote on that, shouldn't we cover the changes?
That's what Mr. Hudgens covered in his report.
I didn't really hear a change.
I think currently, they're not allowed to have any overnight stays, and I think it was just removing the no overnight stay portion of that.
Is that how they're going to word it?
I mean, that is the gist of what we would be doing, as well as allowing trucks to be permitted just as an accessory to our commercial use. Currently, they're permitted as accessory to a very large commercial use. We would just change it to.
That's more what I remember from the meeting.
Accessory to any commercial use, but also removing the no overnight stay requirement so that they would be able to stay overnight.
But just to clarify, so all we're doing is approving to move forward, we're working out an ordinance. We're not approving the ordinance, we're just approving to move forward, to put the language together.
You are giving staff the direction to start the process.
Correct.
So the, the ordinance will come back with all the Ts and Cs and.
Correct.
Details.
My apologies for not bringing that up.
No, no, you're fine. I just want to make sure before we actually take a vote, we know what we're voting for. So, council, to reiterate, I need a motion on the food truck item for changes in the ordinance to be presented to us that will provide permitting and some overnight stay differences in wording in the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. We do have an executive session item this evening. Executive session item number one is the receipt of legal advice related to potential claims and ongoing legal matters. Please note that council will not make any decisions in executive session, but we may come back out into regular session and do so. So with that, I'll take a motion for moving into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
And I need a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. We will return. All right, I need a motion to return.
Make a motion to come out of this executive session?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, all opposed? All right. Ben, what's for the good of the whole?
Let's flip back to my notes. First thing I was thinking about is this time of year, with everybody riding through town and things to be able to see, everything is going on, and I was really struck by, it was a quote that I heard, the, "The earth laughs and flowers." It just made me think about walking around the yard with moms. In mom's backyard, everything is blooming, everything's coming alive, things have been dormant all year long, and everything's coming around. So good motivation for all of us to get out and try to be motivated and do things for those of us who, I speak for myself, who have been rather complacent during the years, to get out and get motivated a little bit. So anyway, just, and pick a flower, take it home to your wife, too.
Till tomorrow night.
Right.
Tonight.
Tonight, 30 tonight.
Thank you. Alan?
Actually, I'm going to add on to what he was talking about. Springtime is beautiful. Carpenter bees.
Tennis racket.
Complete opposite of that. So carpenter bees are an excellent, excellent pollinator, especially of eggplants, tomatoes, and other vegetables and flowers. Please don't destroy the carpenter bees, because they're just as important as honeybees and everything else. So there's that.
I'll blame this.
He sent a bee statue in this house.
I got put in my place, because I was of the same, the, the big fat plastic bats, man, they make great noises, but I got put in my place with carpenter bees, and I, and I said I'd make a point to say how important they are.
Cocktail in my garage, yeah.
Bees are bees, not just anyone. Daylight savings time, make sure you.
We already had it.
We already had that. Check your, check your CO detector, check your smoke detectors, change the batteries and those. And while you're doing that, get your family together and make a plan, not just a, a personal plan, but, you know, what happened in Ohio with the, with the train car derailment. What would we, what would you do as a family if that happened here? Where would you go? You can't go to your house. Where are you going to go? Make a plan. Have a plan. That's it.
Thank you. Also, please, sir?
Question on the food trucks. Don't we have a list of approved food trucks on our website?
We do.
So for anybody who's looking to bring a food truck for a neighborhood event or whatever, we're keeping that up to date.
It's a good resource.
So it is a great resource. Also, wanting to know, we've got the Main Street Jam this weekend, right? I didn't hear Jacana present on that today, but since we have videotape this Friday night, right?
It's not our event.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. There is an event taking place on Main Street in Fort Mill Friday night, correct?
That is what we're aware of.
Okay. Okay. And I'd also, again, with spring season, like to talk about safety. We've seen a couple of things on our side of town. Unfortunate accident where a gentleman fell off of a electric skateboard with his head and is dealing with some pretty significant consequences with his family. I know there was a bicyclist that unfortunately passed away, thankfully not by hitting, it was health-related, but still, just be mindful. People are in the roads, walking, riding bikes, skateboards, dogs, all of that. So just be mindful as we all get out and about and start enjoying this great community we live in.
Thank you. Chris Wolf?
Kind of thought there about spring is on the way. There'll be a lot more people outside. The events will pick up, both town-sponsored and private. You know, there's, we mentioned the event this weekend on Main Street, so be careful. One thing I'd like to say is, you know, as more people are out and about, walking, riding bikes, if you're driving a car, please pay attention to what you're doing. Drive safely. The other morning I went to Rock Hill and there were two wrecks between my house and twenty-one, which is two tenths of a mile. One, I was at that new intersection at Sprat and Fort Mill Parkway, and the other one was at Fort Mill Parkway and Highway twenty-one. Both of them ran into the back of somebody else because they were probably looking at their phone when the car in front of them stopped. So it's, you know, life's short. We don't need to add to potential damages or injuries. So just be careful. Put your phone down. Pay attention when you're driving. You'd never know there could have been a kid stepped out there or somebody could have been injured. And is, you know, as the weather gets nice, it's going to be more and more people out and about. So just be careful and enjoy the town.
Thank you. Chris Moody?
This past Friday, Chris Wolf, myself, Christopher Pettit and Penelope, we all went to an economic development summit, York Electric, put on the South Carolina Power Team. There was a lot of educational, York Tech was there, some county council people, legislatures. It was really good, but they had a, it was pretty interesting. You know, they were talking about things that draw people to a town, having a clean town, not having trash and mattresses and stuff when people are coming to look at it. And, you know, don't talk about possible economic development projects. They had a, shared a story where this guy was going up, up for reelection. It was a big jobs announcement coming somewhere and he wanted to take credit for it, so he leaked it to the press and then the, the deal fell through as a result of that. So, but it was kind of interesting. While I was there, we were talking about farmers in the USA and they said, everyone stand up if your grandparents farmed or did something on a farm. Almost the majority of the room stood up and if your parents and then about half the room and then, and then there was only one left, but, so while, this was a dairy farmer and I shared, he wanted to farm and I told my story to the group that I did not want to farm and learned that at a very young age. And at the break, this lady walked up to me and said, where, my husband is from your hometown. And backing up a little bit, about twenty years ago, this is a little personal, but I saw, my eyes were crossed when I was growing up, had to have three eye surgeries to get them straightened out. And I saw a little boy that looked a lot like me at a Chick-fil-A on a Friday night, about two thousand five or six. And I was single at the time, was eating supper, so I shared my doctor's information, it straightened my eyes with this mom and dad. And I always wondered what happened to this kid. And so never knew the names or nothing. So this lady walks up to me at the break and says, well, my husband worked there in your hometown for a few years and he roomed with this guy and then it just clicked in my mind. And I, and I looked at her and said, do you have, did you have a little boy that had glasses and crossed eyes? And she froze. And I said, because you're not, and I shared this story with her and I said, he's probably in college by now. And it was just kind of a neat moment. You know, he ended up having surgery with a different eye doctor and helped him in the same way as me, but I was like, man, you never, twenty years later probably, you know, after I saw these people and our paths crossed and I still don't even know their names, but it was just kind of like a neat little moment. But it was a great conference, learned a lot. And, you know, it's good to always be with our town staff and, and learn more with them, too. So that's all I got.
This world is a small place if you'll have a conversation.
Yeah.
Ronnie?
Going back to the park, I ride by there every day, just see what's going on, walk up there and look around. And they've got equipment coming out of the ground, so.
Saw that today.
It's moving forward.
Can you get some, can you get some drone footage of the overhead, how it looks?
Say what?
Can you get some drone footage of the overhead?
I don't have a drone.
But you could walk up there and look at it. Throw your phone over it and then hit record.
Okay, my part will be short and sweet. Spring break is coming April, the first week of April, so there'll be a lot of folks out and about.
College is on, is on right now, college.
Yeah. I'm praying for the peach crop with cold weather that's coming tonight, tomorrow and the next night. Litter, guys, I, I am so grateful. I'm going to get the name of the gentleman from Waterside that cleans up the intersection at Dopey's and the bypass. That guy's faithful. I mean, I've never seen anybody work as hard as he does to clean up that intersection. The people that volunteer for our second Saturday service are saints, in my opinion, because I don't know what's wrong with people. Stop throwing trash or letting it blow out the back of your car. I've never seen such. It's worse than I've ever seen it. And no matter how hard we work, there's still people that are doing that. Adopt a drain is a good program through our stormwater as we move into the spring season. Even though we don't have fall leaves, there's lots of other things that with all the heavy rains, adopt a drain's easy. You just make sure it stays free of debris and trash. I'll be speaking at the Rotary this week, just doing an update, a simple one, that I did at Unity a week or so ago to the Lunch Bunch. And I spoke at the Fort Mill High School Band Send-Off. Our Fort Mill High School band is playing in Dublin for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. That was a crazy good experience. The music was incredible. I, I was just so impressed with the band, the band parents and everybody that came to that. And I wish them all the best as they are now in Ireland. They left last Saturday, Sunday. So good thoughts to all of them. So with that, thank you all for your service.
And I'd like to say real quick, too, thank you to council. You know, I've mentioned it to you guys one-on-one, but thank you for your prayers with what my family went through last weekend. One thing, my, I'm now the proud parent of a daughter-in-law, daughter-in-law, but through all of that, my mom had some health issues right at the same time. So staff and council, thank you for your prayers. It meant a lot to have you guys as my other family, my extended family and the texts and messages. So again, we've said it many times, we may not always agree and see eye to eye, but in the end, we're all family and we're in it together. So I, I just want to say publicly, thank you guys for being kind and being humans and being family. So thank you.
And we enjoyed it.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much.